All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. I understand there's some Lions playing tonight, so we're gonna get down to business so we can make sure as much Lions viewership as possible. So with that, can we please have a roll call? Sure, I forgot what I was doing. Ms. Grizmkowski, here. Mr. Demick.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Wiseman.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here.
I am present. Ms. Dodd.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you very much. Please rise if you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we need to start with the approval of the agenda. I would like to make a quick friendly amendment. We have under unfinished business bus purchase with the intention to vote this evening. I believe we're probably gonna push the vote on that till our next meeting, so it's not gonna move from unfinished business, but just wanna let everybody know that we will probably wait to vote on that item until our next meeting, because we still have some unfinished questions. So other than that, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve as amended.
Thank you. Do we have support?
Support.
Oh.
Support in stereo. We'll take Ms. Ryan for support. Thank you. All right, and we'll do a roll call. Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
And Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, well, thanks, everybody, for joining us tonight. First thing is items from the board president. I will keep it brief. Two things is we, over the last month, many of the board members and Dr. Sala and I have attended a lot of the schools to see how the year has started off, and it has been absolutely wonderful to get into the buildings and see what's happening, not for a planned visit, not for pomp and circumstances of parents in the building, but just what happens on the day-to-day basis in a classroom. And I think I've been really, I've been really happy about the opportunity to do that. I know my board colleagues also have been happy to be able to get in and see what's going on, and absolutely tons of respect for the educators, the people who are keeping the buildings clean and presentable, those who are making lunches and breakfasts, and the parents who are volunteering, and everyone really is doing absolutely their best to pitch in and really make these not just buildings for learning, but homes for learning, and places where you can feel comfortable and like you're part of a place and part of a community. One note that I'm gonna just throw out there that was kind of the highlight, an unexpected highlight, is we met the person who handles the custodial work at Oxbow Elementary. And when we got there, it smelled, we were in the cafeteria, and it smelled of glue gun, and I can't help myself, I have to follow the fragrance of a good glue gun. And we went to the back, and we'd noticed that their little courtyards were very well-kept. They were lovely. And we went back, and here were two fairy houses, multi-story fairy houses made out of scrap wood and scrap pieces and all the things that were found around the building. And no one was more proud to take those to the courtyard than the person who manages the beauty of the building, adding a little bit of whimsy to our courtyard. So it's with love and care and kindness that people are putting in the effort every day, and we really appreciate all the work. Next, I'll talk about sports, which I don't do very often, but we are nearing the end of regular sports season. A lot of our athletes have had really stellar seasons. We know that it's hard work. We know that teamwork is one of the most important things that a child can learn when they're in the schools, whether it's through the arts, athletics, academics, all of those things. And whether we have groups going on to regionals and states, or their season is over, with just a really great team season, we're appreciative and proud of you and glad that you've had a great season of learning how to be on a team. And really with that, I'm all set. I'll move on down to recognition.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have three Huron Valley highlights, and I'm going to invite Ms. Roffler to the podium to introduce these three highlights.
Good evening. I first want to say congratulations to our educators, staff, and students for successfully completing at least a month and a half of school. Tonight, though, we want to take a moment to recognize our new educators to the Huron Valley School District. If Jennifer Bjorkman and Martin Lindberg could join me to introduce them.
Tonight, it is my great pleasure to introduce the newest members of our Huron Valley School staff. These educators bring fresh energy, passion, and a commitment to student success, and we are excited to welcome them into our district. To ensure they feel supported and prepared for their roles, we have implemented a robust new educator program. This past summer, our new teachers participated in the New Educator Orientation, an intensive multi-day program designed to provide them with essential tools, insights, and connections to help them thrive in our district. Throughout the school year, our new educators will continue to receive support through regular new educator meetings where they will have opportunities to engage in professional development, share experiences, and strengthen their instructional practices. We actually just had one of those just now. Additionally, each new educator is paired with a mentor, an experienced teacher who serves as a guide and support system throughout their first year, helping them navigate the challenges and opportunities that come with teaching. And I actually see some of our mentors in this room right now. We are excited about the contributions these new educators will make to our schools and students. Please join me in giving them a warm welcome to Huron Valley Schools. This is Brianna Smith. Brianna is working at the Apollo Center, and this is her fourth year, not in Huron Valley, but fourth year as a teacher. This is Lindsay Rash. Lindsay works at Muir Middle School in Apollo. She's a social worker, and she's been in education for eight years. This is Tammy Preston. Tammy works at Apollo in the GSRP preschool. She's a preschool teacher, and this is her first year. Jessica Dornfried. She works at Oxbow Elementary as a kindergarten teacher, and this is her first year teaching at Huron Valley, sixth year teaching overall. This is Beth Przeszki. She is a fourth grade teacher at Oxbow Elementary. This is her first year in Huron Valley, but her fourteenth year teaching overall. Here is Becca Halliburton-Wulner. Becca is a first grade teacher at Johnson Elementary, and even though it's her first year in Huron Valley Schools, she has three years of teaching experience. This is Bria Hirschman. Bria is a third grade teacher at Johnson Elementary, and this is her first year teaching. Julia Bowen. Julia is a third grade teacher at Johnson Elementary, and this is her first year overall. This is Alyssa Cormos. Alyssa is a PE teacher at Lakewood Elementary. This is her first full year of teaching. Savannah Durham. Savannah is a music teacher at Lakewood Elementary. It's her first year in Huron Valley Schools, but her third year as an educator. Nathan Brezny. Nathan is a resource room teacher at both Kurtz and Lakewood Elementary Schools, first year teaching, and maybe even a former student of mine. Brendan is a third grade teacher at Spring Mills Elementary, first year teaching, and Brendan is also a former student in Huron Valley Schools. Kelly Alaska. Kelly is a fourth grade teacher at Spring Mills Elementary, and although it's her first year in HVS, this is her sixth year overall as a teacher. Maura Sampson. Maura is a first grade teacher at Highland Elementary, and she has been in education for seven years. Shelby Welling. Shelby is a third grade teacher at Highland Elementary, first year teacher as well. Jamie Genowak. Jamie is a second grade teacher at Highland Elementary, and she's first year in HVS, but 23 years in education. Kelly Vatieri. Kelly is a resource room teacher at Country Oaks Elementary, first year in HVS, sixteenth Annalise Yancho. Annalise is a third grade teacher at Lakewood Elementary, and this is her first year teaching. Melissa Horn. Melissa is a speech-language pathologist at Kurtz and Heritage Elementary. She has been in this role for 17 years outside of Huron Valley Schools. We have a lot. Kathleen Taladay. Kathleen is a speech-language pathologist at Country Oaks Elementary. She's been practicing in schools and clinics for four years now. Daniel Affecto. Daniel is a music and technology teacher at Highland Elementary, and Daniel's been in education for eight years. Okay, so I'm just gonna pause here for a second, so those are our early childhood and elementary new teachers to HVS. Maybe we can give them a round of applause. We're gonna keep adding to the group with secondary people. So our first one at the secondary level, Brooke Kales. Brooke is a sixth and seventh grade social studies teacher at White Lake Middle School, and this is her first year teaching. Erica House. Erica is a Spanish teacher at Milford High School. She's been in other school districts for seven years. Jason Pratt. Jason is a physics teacher here at Milford High School, first year at HVS, thirteenth year as a teacher, and also a former HVS student as well. Carrie Mowers. Carrie is a special ed resource teacher right here at Milford High School, and this is her first year teaching. Christine Kowalski. Christine is a moderate CI teacher here at Milford High School. This is her first year as a classroom teacher, but she's been in education for 13 years. Noah Dukesheer. Noah is a resource room teacher at Muir Middle School. And finally, we have Jennifer Zajak. Jennifer is an ASD teacher at Lakeland High School.
Thank you, and welcome. We would like to take a picture of you all, but first I'm gonna allow the board to have any questions or comments.
I just want to thank you very much for being here tonight. I understand you were trapped in a class before you arrived, but again, still thank you for coming. I hope over the years, you've learned or will learn to enjoy Huron Valley as much as I have, and I appreciate everything that you're doing for our kids. Thanks for being here.
Yes, we had a great opportunity earlier this year to meet. Unfortunately, we don't have any ice cream for you tonight. Sorry. But I do, I also want to thank you for being here, and being part of our community, and without question, you made the right choice.
All right. Thank you. Smile pretty.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to also acknowledge that the principals are here, many of the principals, and thank you for them for coming tonight.
What about getting Marty and Jennifer in the picture? The whole team.
Also, the mentor teachers should be up there.
Oh, yeah, mentor teachers, come on! No? And I will tell you, as you're maybe already walking to the door anyway, we appreciate you coming, but we also know that the Lions are playing, and you may want to get home for that game. So you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to head home.
So from our incredible educators to our incredible students, tonight, we want to recognize many Huron Valley School students who have earned either a commended status or semifinalist standing in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Approximately 16,000 semifinalists are recognized, representing less than 1 percent, let's say that again, less than 1 percent of all high school students across the nation. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue to compete for National Merit Scholarship money worth nearly $28 million, which we'll find out next spring. If I can have Board Member Michelle Ryan and International Academy Principal Ryan Parrott join me to introduce students who have achieved these incredible feats.
So you can hand this, and he will... And then Barbara, you can let them to go.
Yeah, and we'll have you guys do the same thing once you come up. You grab your... You can stand over there.
So thank you, board, for having us this evening. My name is Ryan Parrott. I'm the principal of the International Academy. I also am representing Milford for this evening for their representative. Unfortunately, many of our students are very active, not only in school, but in extracurriculars, so some of our students are unable to attend this evening. International Academy students that were unable to attend that did achieve the letter of commendation are Anna Gilders, Shayna Purdy, Teagan Rice, Ian Walden, and Ethan West. Additionally, Milford student Gavin Hess was able to achieve this letter of commendation. In attendance tonight are commended students are Katrina Dunn, and Mahant Taluri. In addition to our commended students, representing the top 0.5 percent nationally, we have two students that have earned National Merit semifinalist status. These students are continuing on in the finalist category, along with some essays and additional information that they are going to be submitting for this achievement. and Anna Lennon. Those are our International Academy and Milford commended and semifinalist students.
We would like to take a picture with the board, but first I'd like the board, if they have any questions or comments.
Questions, comments? Amy.
I am so proud of you. You are, you are just a shiny example of what a great education can do, and I'm very excited to see what the future holds for you. So, well done.
Other comments? I'm gonna congratulate students, but also parents, because I am just embarking on this journey with a sixth grader, and I watch, and I cross my fingers, and I hope one day for excellence in everything she does. So, parents, I know you're very proud, and we're happy to share this happy occasion with you, and congratulations to you, and congratulations to the students.
If we can have the board come out in front, and if the students will line up there. For any parents that would like to take a picture, you're welcome to join me. And I will share with all of you who I imagine there might be a little bit of rule follower nature in the group, you are welcome to stay with us, but you are also more than welcome to head home, because we know every day is a big day in the life of a high school student and their parents, so you are welcome to excuse yourselves if you would like to. Thanks again for coming. We have so many good things going on. I'm still up here. It's all right. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the Huron Valley Promise, a powerful commitment to our students, families, and community. The Huron Valley Promise represents the collective belief that every child deserves the opportunity to pursue a bright future through education. This initiative helps open doors to higher education for Huron Valley graduates by creating pathways to success after high school. Let's take a closer look at what that is.
I would like to go to college yet, so I can learn the job that I love.
Huron Valley Promise is a one-time grant for parents or guardians to help save for their children's college or trade school education.
We sign up for the Huron Valley Promise because it's important to us that our kids are prepared. If they choose to go on to college or trade school, then we have some money set aside for them.
The Huron Valley Promise Grant is available for kindergarten students in the Huron Valley School District.
By providing our youth the opportunity to get this higher education, whether it be in skills training or in regular colleges, they're going to have better jobs, they're going to be more apt to get promoted and stay in the community longer.
So we've watched a number of parents and families that participate in this program, and to see how well their children do in further education has been really rewarding.
Hannah really likes to think about the future. She gets excited knowing that she has things that are coming forward. She's always thinking of new plans, and having this for her to look forward to is a really good thing for her.
As a mother of two kids who went through college, it's so important to have a plan for the future and have those finances started early so that you can help provide it.
Investing early in the student's education allows for compounding of interest, which allows the funds to grow faster.
That little bit of money now will grow and expand over time, and so that when Hannah's ready for it, she'll have that money available.
Parents and guardians simply need to open a new MESP account with as little as $25 investment. Well, you would want to go out to the Michigan Education Savings Program website, which is misaves.com, and fill out the online application. After opening a MESP account, simply bring in the account statement along with a completed promise application to one of the Huron Valley State Bank branch offices. You can find a Huron Valley Promise application on the website at huronvalleypromise.org. The account is also available for grandparents and aunts and uncles to contribute to the account for special occasions or just to help them save for their college education.
I really like learning. I think it's nice.
Huron Valley State Bank is very proud to participate in the Huron Valley Promise Program.
The Huron Valley Promise is definitely helping Hannah prepare for a better future.
So we have been involved with the Huron Valley Promise for many years. This video, which was just reproduced this year, we've had a video that plays at the kindergarten orientation every year to educate incoming parents about this important, not only opportunity, but as we know, for anyone who has parents, including myself, with two kids in college, it gets very expensive. So this partnership with Huron Valley State Bank is so important, and we're going to continue to, we really reinvigorated the committee this year to get the word out, to educate our families that this is out there. So at this time, I would like to invite Huron Valley State Bank President Jack Schubertowski along with other members of the Huron Valley Promise Board to join me. Also, if HVS Board Member Jacob Dimick can also join us. As we present this special recognition for everything not only does the Huron Valley State Bank do, but also this Huron Valley Promise Committee, we know that you, I've been at many a meetings, that you guys are working tirelessly not only to get donations to give to our families, but to get the word out so our families are educated on it. So before I give the board an opportunity to ask any questions or comments, I do want to give the microphone to Mr. Schubertowski, if you have any to add.
Thank you. Yes, we certainly appreciate the support of the Huron Valley Schools with the Huron Valley Promise. The program's been going on 19 or 20 years now. We've given up to 200 grants, between $100 and $200 to families, kindergarten students within the Huron Valley School District, so it's been very rewarding that way. Yeah, yeah, certainly. So Sherri Miles is with Huron Valley State Bank. Don Grill is the Township Supervisor. Green, I'm sorry, Don Green. My former boss was Don Grill. And of course Barb Rothler and Chris Pantaleo is on that committee as well, so, and of course Dr. Sala, Janet Roberts, oh yeah, Kim Gelbreth, Scott Rolando. Yeah, no, thanks for the, yeah. But again, it's been reinvigorated. We certainly appreciate all the involvement from, from all those members, and again, we hope to be able to continue to do more with this program.
On behalf of the Huron Valley School Board, we'd like to present you guys with this certificate for the Huron Valley Promise. Just, you know, it's a wonderful thing that you guys are helping bridge this gap for students and offering them wonderful opportunities, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
And before you leave, if we can, if anybody else on the board has any comments or questions? Comments or questions from the board? Amy?
I appreciate the fact that we have the Huron Valley Promise. As someone who's been putting kids through school for a while now, it is very, it's a very expensive endeavor to do, and so having a plan and, and just the impetus to start is really important. I've had multiple, I've been at multiple kindergarten orientations, and Ms. Miles has been there at everyone that I've been at, and has presented this, and, and I think people are really, you know, they're getting a lot of information at that time, but this is one of those pieces of information that becomes an aha moment for them. So I just want to say thank you for what you do, because it has just such an incredible long-reaching implication for our students, so thank you.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Cotter?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I think you summed it up well, but you were able to provide opportunities for families who may not have that, that may not have that to plan ahead for their kids. So kindergarten roundup or orientation is the place to start. Thanks what you do for our community. Yeah.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Going to do a quick picture. No, no, you look fantastic. And the other groups, we told them they could leave, but you need to stay. No, I'm kidding. You're, you're, well, we appreciate you, and we appreciate your time is precious, so thanks for, for coming, and you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to, see you later. All right, with that, it doesn't look like we have a school presentation tonight, so we can move on to superintendent communication.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I do not have a lot this evening. I would just remind everyone that we are still working towards our first Student Support Services Strategic Plan meeting that's coming up here in about a week and a half. And this week, we have a second parent listening tour, and we're at Heritage or Milford? We're at Milford High School. So we just want to encourage any parents out there who are interested in sharing their feedback regarding our Student Support Services operations. I feel like we had a lot of really good feedback at the last meeting. I just want to invite any and all who are interested in sharing that feedback. It's very helpful for us as we plan for the future.
Paul, can you real quick remind everybody what Student Support Services covers?
Certainly, that's, that's a question that was asked. So Student Support Services really relates to supporting students with special needs. So if any child who perhaps has an IEP or, you know, they're thinking of an IEP, this would be the time and the place to provide some feedback. Second item I wanted to share this evening is, you know, as we are preparing to go out for bid here soon on our two new middle schools, both here at the Milford Heritage Campus as well as the Bogey Lake Campus, we have been hardworking behind the scenes in preparing all the steps that are essential to, to go out for bid and break ground in a manner that is consistent with the timeline that we've been sharing with the board. I just want to thank Rick Hamel as well as Rick Colwell. Rick Hamel's our supervisor in Highland Township, and Rick Colwell is our supervisor in White Lake Township. We had an opportunity to meet with the supervisor for Highland last week to walk through some of those plans, more, more so from a, less so from a what the building looks like perspective, and more so where the building will sit, and talking about easements, traffic flow, things of that nature. So just appreciative to both Mr. Hamel and Mr. Colwell for their partnership and support of our, of our school district. And finally, I would share that this week, Ms. Rothler, myself, and Ms. Dodd will be presenting at the Michigan Association of School Boards Conference. Just pleased to share with our community that the hard work that we've done as a school district and as a school board as it relates to school safety and security has been recognized by the state, and they've asked us to share some of the best practices that we have implemented over the last several years. So excited to share some of that work and proud of our school district for being recognized for that work. And with that, Madam President, I'll turn it back to you.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Student leadership. So I'm going to introduce Gabby. Gabby's from Milford High School, and she is part of our TLT Committee, and I'm sure she has good stuff to say. Thanks for being here, Gabby.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name's Gabby Hallgren. I'm the student representative for Milford High School. Thank you for having me. I'll be reading straight from my notes, just so I don't forget anything, and although many of you already know this information, I just wanted to further highlight some of Milford students and their recent accomplishments. Senior Gavin Hess has been named commended student in the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program, as previously mentioned, and around 34,000 students in the nation get this award. This means his test score was in the top 3 percent. Very, very impressive. NHS has kicked off their fall project. We are accepting donations of new or gently-used winter gear that will go to community sharing. This organization helps families in the community that are in need. I would also like to congratulate Senior Eli Garrus for becoming the state mountain biking champion and girls varsity volleyball for winning Lakes Valley Conference. Milford High School is also excited to introduce new clubs this year like Guardian Club, Turning Point USA, Finance Club, and Debate Club. Obviously, Milford has a lot to offer. We are very proud of Milford High School's faculty, students, and family, and we are appreciative of the sport from our Highland and Milford communities. Thank you also to the Huron Valley School Board for all the work you do. Go Mavs.
Thank you very much, Gabby. Association communication. And Gabby, same goes for you. You can stay, you can go, it's up to you.
You've never said that to me in six years.
Never.
Good evening. What a wonderful night this is, celebrating our new Huron Valley educators. This year, we have 35 new educators. They come to us with a wide range of experiences. Some have been in other districts for many years, and others just graduated from college a few short months ago. This group of new educators has incredible spirit and enthusiasm. They ask thoughtful questions, are interested in learning all about Huron Valley, and have jumped right in to help their colleagues and support their buildings. For 13 of our 35 new educators, it is their first time working in the schools. Most of them just graduated from college and are so excited to have a classroom of their own. We welcome the fresh new ideas and enthusiasm that they bring as they are savoring their first year in the schools. They've heard that there's a lot of ups and downs throughout the year. It's what we were talking about at our meeting an hour ago. But they promise to lean on the support of their mentors, their colleagues, and principals to get them through. Our veteran educators who are new to HVS have much to share with us and will learn alongside us, and we will learn from them. This year, we even have two educators who previously worked in school systems outside of Michigan, but no matter where they used to work, learning the Huron Valley way takes a while as curriculum and protocols vary district to district. So we all know they got into this job to spend time with students. Even just seven weeks into the school year, there have been creative lesson plans already presented, projects explained, and classroom friendships formed. They've always already made connections with their mentors and their colleagues. They have joined a school district that believes in supporting their teachers. We know that the best learning environments for our students are created by the best working environments for our educators. So it's important to all of us that they have the tools, the resources, and the collaborative atmosphere so they can thrive. So to all of our new educators who now have left us, but I'm sure they're listening along, on those tough days, remember the importance of the work that you do to support our students. Lean on us when you are in need, and don't forget to share your wisdom with others. Thank you for choosing the Valley. We are grateful that you are here, that you have made us your home, and we look forward to many years together in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, stay, go, we like it when you stay, so we appreciate it. Moving on to board court, no, Cotter, you have to stay. Moving on to board correspondence. No board correspondence tonight. All right, Treasures Report.
No report from the Treasurer tonight.
Okay, reports from board committees. The Executive Committee has not met since our, has not met since our last, since our last meeting. Our next meeting is, I'm going to fill you in on that after the TLT minutes.
The TLT has met. We met on October 8 at the Administration Building. Our meeting was called to order at 9:03. Present were myself, Ms. Cotter, Ms. Grizmkowski, Dr. Nemeth, Dr. Sala, Mr. Endicott, Mr. Lindberg, Ms. Bjorkman, Mr. Kalmbach, Mr. Van Gotham, Mr. Twig, Ms. Gilbert, Ms. Horwitz, and our IA West student leader, James. There was no public comment, and we had no unfinished business. Under new business, we talked about the kindergarten through five personal safety health lesson update. Ms. Gilbert and Mr. Lindberg shared an update to the K-5 health curriculum with a focus on staying personally safe lesson that was presented to the committee and approved by the board last spring. Teacher leaders with the support of school social workers will train K-5 teachers and administrators this fall on the board-approved safety lessons that will be taught at all grade levels. A parent opt-out letter was reviewed with the group and will be provided to families. In addition, there is a process for parents to preview the lesson that will be introduced at each grade level. Then we discussed the data center bid. Mr. Endicott and Mr. Twig presented the group with the data center bids. Due to an extreme increase in the cost of software licenses for the current data center servers, HVS Technology is recommending replacing the hardware. Multiple bids were reviewed, and the team is currently evaluating the best option. This purchase will be paid out of the 2019 bond funds, and a presentation will be shared at a future finance and operations meeting. We had, for standing agenda items, we had no updates on strategic plan or safety security. Student leadership, James, our IA West student, joined the committee for the first time. He shared that the IA had recently had their Spirit Week, and the senior class won this year's competition. Seniors also had a recent overnight trip to Camp Tamarack for a collaborative science experience, and James also shared that it had been nice to see a lot of freshmen at IA this year since recent class sizes have been low. So freshman students seem to be fitting into the school community well and bonding with fellow students. Other items discussed, we've discussed dual enrollment. Mr. Lindberg shared the administrative guidelines on dual enrollment. He would like to send electronic notification to families regarding dual enrollment through an email rather than paper mailing. He will have additional conversations with high school principals before he finalizes the parent letter. Under board goals, the TLT- Under board goals, the TLT Committee discussed possible goals for 25, 26. It was suggested that their goals should align with the district's goals such as strategic planning, student support services, budget policy accountability, to ensure that the board has regular checkups on all that is going on. Under student support services, Mr. Kalmbach provided an update on student support services. He is working on a strategic plan group that will include parents, students, and leadership staff and has received a good response so far. We adjourned at 10:37 and our next meeting is this Wednesday, October 22nd at 9:00 a.m. at the administration building.
Thank you, Ms. Pistana. Finance and operations.
Yes, the finance and operations committee met on Wednesday, October 15th, 2025, at 4:15 p.m. at the administrative office. Present were myself, along with Member Ryan and Member Cotter, Dr. Sala, Mr. Van Gotham, John Rebe, Heather Carrigan, Scott Endicott, Jenna Moore, Tyler Maxwell, Mike Miller from Clark Construction, Bill Weinrock from TMP Architectural, and Paul Twig from Barton Mall. There were no public comments. We reviewed the minutes of the previous meeting along with the regular agenda that you have before us tonight. There were no consent agenda items. Unfinished business, we discussed Bid PAC 15, which is the administrative building relocation furnishing package. The committee had no further questions. Administration will seek approval at tonight's meeting. New business, Bid PAC T6, the data center bid. Scott Endicott and Paul Twigs presented to us, the committee, to our committee, the data center bids that Member Pistana, I believe the same presentation was given to our committee as was presented to TLT. Approval of the maintenance and operations pickup truck purchase. The committee reviewed the purchase that's before us tonight as new business as it relates to the 2025 GMC Sierra regular cab, long box pickup truck from La Fontaine, as it relates to the My Deal vendor purchase. The purchase will be funded through the general fund and administration will have it as new business tonight with approval recommendation at the November 10th meeting. Food service pizza bid, there was a discussion as it relates to the bid that was put together by Co-Pro Plus. It's recommended that the board award the fresh, ready-to-serve pizza bid to Pizza Partners Michigan LLC, which is Little City's Pizza, for the 25, 26 school year in the amount not to exceed $150,000. This bid is for three years with two one-year renewal options. These purchases are budgeted within the food service fund. Dr. Sala also discussed the safety and security and provided us an update as it relates to the 31AA budget and the legal update. This is our, from the state categorical within the safety and security categorical budget that was approved by the state. He also discussed with the committee an update on the Brooks property along with the land for sale along Watkins Boulevard. Other items that were discussed, there was an update as it relates to the bond construction from Clark Construction in Bid PAC 1 and Bid PAC 2 for the White Lake Middle School along with the new middle school. Administration building relocation update, Mr. Van Gotham provided a construction update and coordinated turf for the committee prior to the holiday break in December. Middle school schematic design update, TMP will share drawings at the board study session on November 6th with the entire Board of Education. We also had an opportunity to look at the year-to-date budget to actual. Future discussion items, our auditors will present at the December 3rd finance and operations meeting and the December 8th Board of Education meeting, the audit findings for the 24, 25 school year. The meeting adjourned at 5:11. The next meeting will be held at the administrative office at 4:15 on November 5th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. And an update, the next executive committee meeting is at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, October 30th in the, at the administration building, so. And we do not have student support services that will meet quarterly, so we'll have minutes on that as soon as we have a meeting. Next on our agenda is public comment. I have not received any public comment forms. I'm looking, looking. There's only like three of you who haven't spoken yet, so anyone, anyone? No, okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do we have support?
Support.
Thank you, Ms. Cotter. Any discussion? All right, let's take a roll call vote.
Ms. Grisimkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Moving down to unfinished business, we're going to start with Bid PAC 15, administration building relocation furnishing packet, Exhibit B.
I'd like to make a motion to move the Board of Education to approve Bid PAC 15, the administration building relocation furnishing package as presented to the board.
Thank you very much. Do we have support?
Yeah, I'll support that.
Okay. And then we'll open it up for discussion. You want to?
I was just going to say, since our last board meeting, we have not had any further questions. This was presented to the finance and operations committee on October 1st, included in a board communication in the second, and then our last board meeting as well as this evening.
All right, thank you. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please. Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Grisimkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Dimick.
Yep.
And Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, thank you. Moving down to bus purchase. So this is the one that we are not going to vote on tonight, but I'm wondering, should we open it for discussion?
Can I speak to it first?
Yes.
Yeah, so the board actually took action on this item, Exhibit C, back in, it's been a few months now since. And the manufacturer Midwest Transit Equipment dropped a tariff charge on us, probably a week and a half ago, I want to say. We've been trying to fully understand exactly what the tariff included. We wanted to share with the board, the latest we could get information on was last week. We've had a number of really good questions from our Board of Education. We are, as you mentioned, Madam President, we are not, we are not requesting that you take action on this. We are still awaiting some responses to questions from Midwest Transit. But for the listening audience, it's $3,500 tariff charge times two. Mr. Van Gotham, anything you want to add to that? I know you've, you've sent out frequently, or not a frequent, a Q&amp;A document to the board based on the questions that have been asked thus far.
Yeah, so we're still getting clarification on a couple of the items that have been asked of us, so they have, the board has the information that we have so far and will take the next couple of weeks to really make sure everybody's comfortable with the tariff charge because right now, there's really no explanation as to what it's for or what particular part of the bus they're actually requesting the tariff on. And even clarifying with Midwest today, I did not feel any better about the answers I was receiving, so that's kind of where we're at. And again, the letter was printed in August and we got it a couple of weeks ago, so we're just trying to catch up a little bit because now we want to take possession of these buses, but it's really the 12th hour that we're getting this charge put on us.
It's unusual that a vendor would slap a additional cost on something after we've already issued a PO, so it's not, not normal. And that's why we were uncomfortable paying it, even though, you know, it's $3,500 or $7,000 in a pretty large purchase. You know, we aren't comfortable asking or paying for something that the board has not approved in full, so.
And I think the one question I know I've heard from a couple of board members and seems like we have a satisfactory answer is, is this going to interrupt any services for any students, any transportation for students? And I think the answer I've heard is no, but, so we have time.
We have, we have a fleet replacement plan in place based on the 2019 bond. And we purchased several buses out of the 19 bond in the first series and then the 23 capital improvement fund, which is the second series. And so we have, we have buses that are aging out. They are going to need to be replaced, but you know, a month or two is not the end of the world.
Great, thank you. And it's also my understanding these buses are constructed, they're just waiting for us to pay, so. It shouldn't be too long after payments approved to receive, receipt, okay.
Give a satisfactory answer.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Wiseman.
Just clarification, back in March, we approved the purchase of six buses. We've received, we've taken delivery on four of them. What's in question is two buses that are for our special needs students. Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
So that's what the question is, we've already taken delivery on the four.
Yeah, and so the clarification from the, again, Midwest Transit actually is the dealer broker for State of Michigan. Intercontinental is actually the bus that manufactures the bus that we're using, so they had set up to like basically June 3rd. If you had your bus constructed through that period, you were not subject to a tariff, but automatically on June 4th, the world changed and there will now be a tariff charge on all buses that came through that program. And our buses, the special ed buses were just completed construction 16 days ago on the 4th of October, so that's why they're saying we're subject to a $3,500 tariff. And again, without further clarification, we did not feel it was good for us to spend $7,000, even though you've already approved about a million dollars for the buses, because we need to get further clarification, so we want to know what the, what the charge is for, so.
So the four buses that we've already received came in with, within the dollars that the Board of Education approved back in March?
Yes, with no tariff charges.
With no, no additional charges.
Mm-hmm.
And I do appreciate the thoroughness as it relates to the questions that were raised by board members. And I appreciate and look forward to the answers to some of the questions that we still have open.
All right, thanks. We'll move on now to unfinished C, virtual learning days for spring state testing, Exhibit D. We'll do a motion and then we'll open discussion since we've already had a review on this. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the virtual learning days for spring state testing.
Thank you, Ms. Grisimkowski. Do we have support?
All support.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Discussion. Dr. Sala, anything?
I would just turn it over to Dr. Nemeth. I know we've had, you know, since the budget has been passed, there have been some nuances in terms of virtual days that we are currently working through. They've pulled back on allowing a certain number of virtual days, but if you were already in the process of getting approval from your boards or you had approval, then MDE has said they're going to honor, you know, those, those days, so we're working through some logistics. We just want the board to be aware that that's kind of in the background. Dr. Nemeth, I don't know if there's anything you want to add?
No, I think we're, we are seeking those three days. That's just one for the middle school students and sixth and seventh and two for the high school, and that is really related to making that environment as, as good as possible for those students. And spaces, you know, always a thing, staff is a thing. We need to make sure that we, with all the rules and regulations with College Board that we provide that environment. As Dr. Sala said, we did learn recently after the budget was passed that they pulled those days out of the budget, those 15 days, they removed them. But MDE has stated that they do not want to disadvantage any districts, they do not want to disrupt any plans that are already in place. So if we move forward with this plan, we're hoping and we're expecting that there'll be a supplemental to the budget and they will be putting those days back in and that flexibility back in. So we don't have that information yet, but we do anticipate that they will do that knowing that they had a late budget and school's in session and our plans are already in place. So that's kind of where we are right now.
I think for the record, generally speaking, I'm supportive of the legislature's move to remove virtual days. I don't think they're as beneficial as face-to-face instruction, but this is nuanced. And when you're in a high-stakes testing environment and you have students with accommodations and you have students that need assessments to be read to them and you need all hands on deck, it is very difficult for students that are actually in school on that day that are not testing to have an actual good educational day. So it's not that there's an issue with the legislature taking that action. It is sort of challenging when they do it in the middle of a school year, but nevertheless, this flexibility would help us to carry through and allow for a good testing environment.
All right, discussion from the board? Yes, Mr. Dimick.
So just so I understand, this would probably be our last opportunity to use this type of support in terms of, this won't be available next year is what I'm saying, these days?
I think we would just, we would propose that we actually build it into the calendar that way. Because legally, you're required to have 75% daily average attendance. We're usually over 90%, so that's not typically an issue for us, but we would want to have further conversation with the board about how we build that into the calendar. We would have to talk with, with the EA about that as well. You know, any deviations from the calendar would require that. But to your question, Mr. Dimick, I would say that that is in question for sure.
And I would add too that just, it's with those days, regardless of if we do it virtually or if the students are in school, those days are not typical school days. And I think it's important to note that too because a lot of our secondary teachers teach multiple grades. So if they're testing 11th graders or they're testing 8th graders, the rest of their classes are not doing their normal day. So there's always kind of a different schedule and a different amount of assignment, so probably you're right, Mr. Dimick, that those will be taken out of the flexibility, the provision of 21F, but we are still looking at creative ways because the testing environment is so important and it's not a day that we actually have a typical school day anyway. So that would be our plan.
Good questions. Yeah, Tom. Sorry, brain.
My name's Tom.
I know, Tom. Tom, Wiseman.
Yeah, Wiseman, thank you. This is our second year.
Yes.
And how did it go the first year?
It was great, it was great.
Do you, do you see any changes based on our experiences?
The only, the changes we made this year based on our experience last year were really in just the schedule of transportation. We had transportation scheduled at the end of the day, which created a little bit of just difficulty with parent pickup and then buses coming late. So we did adjust our transportation schedule. Other than that, no, I think pretty much we replicated the schedule that we had because it went really well.
And how is this communicated to the parents?
Well, if it is approved, then we will send multiple communications from the high school because it's really just our two comprehensive high schools. IA does do a virtual assessment as well, but they do it a couple of different days. So they, every high school will send out communication through their newsletters, emails, students, so they'll have multiple communications about the days coming up. And I believe we did a robocall last year as well as a reminder.
Yes.
How did it work with our teachers?
Teachers were great. I mean, initially, I think they were very appreciative of it because they understand the stress of that day and it's an exhausting day for them with the testing. There were a few who questioned it and were concerned and at the end, we did do a survey, we did ask those teachers, the principals, you know, got some feedback from the teachers on the, how they felt and it was, even those who may have had some reservations felt really good about it. So I think overall, it was a lot of positive feedback.
How did our students feel about it?
I think the students were great. What do you think Gabby? Yes, I think so.
We're always, as it relates to data, did we see any improvement in scores? Do we have any results back?
We do have results back. I don't know if our data is completely aligned with that day, but I do think that in terms of students having their best shot at showing what they know, I would say I'm pretty confident about that. But in terms of our actual scores moving, I don't know that we could attribute it back to that day.
Okay.
But we'll keep watching that. And I think that's a really important piece though, at all levels.
It's absolutely important.
Yes, and having, you know, thoughtfulness around the schedule, I do think will impact our scores because it provides students with the ability to really show what they know in those smaller settings and just the lack of distraction. So I think in time, we would see that connection.
Great, thank you.
All right, so with that, we'll do a roll call vote. Thank you for the information.
Ms. Grisimkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
I am a yes and Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to new business, starting with A, approval of maintenance and operations pickup truck purchase, Exhibit E.
And I would ask Mr. Van Gotham to take this agenda item.
Thank you, Dr. Sala. So as a result of having a robust fleet for our grounds crew, which includes plowing snow, salting roads, and cutting the grass throughout the district, we rely on vehicles to do that. to do that work for us along with our staff. So we have a fleet that ranges from 2008 to 2024, and it consists of pickup trucks, dump trucks and box trucks. We are asking that the oldest vehicle that is a 2008 be replaced. It's really at end of life. It only has, excuse me, 78,000 miles on it. When you think about the forward and reverse that a snow plow would do, it's actually much more than that. And the body is starting to rust out, literally where the driver's feet will start to go underneath the truck. So my staff is very good about not asking for vehicles unless they're very, very end of life. If you have an opportunity to meet with them, they really use the vehicles to the fullest extent that they can. So this is in the regular rotation. I'm happy that we have the ability to replace these vehicles when they come due. And again, we're working through the MYDIO, which is really the standard for districts on purchasing vehicles. This would be a general fund expense, but we can have that as part of our MNO budget for the year. And it would go a long way to help with our oldest member of our fleet. So we're not asking for approval tonight. This is our first read, but I'm happy to take questions and we did discuss at length in the Finance and Operations Committee the need for this truck.
Thank you. We have questions from the, yes, Tom?
Yes, it was presented to us at Finance and Operations. I think it's important to note that while you're asking for approval at $58,000, $53, that price is net of $6,600 worth of credits that we're receiving because of the MYDIO discount and the municipal discount that LaFontaine's providing to us. So I think it's important to note that, that because we are participating with the State of Michigan and there are some discounts, we're recognizing that.
Thank you very much. Other comments? All right, we will take the time we have over the next few weeks to think of questions and comments that we have, ask those, and then we will take action on this at our next meeting. Next, food service pizza bid for 2526.
So I'm going to kick this to Mr. Van Goghtham as well, but before I do, you'll notice that this item is bolded on your agenda. And while it is new business and we typically do two reads, we did hear from the Finance and Operations Committee that pizza is very important.
Pizza emergency.
We have a bit of pizza gate going on across the district that we need to resolve. So the committee recommended that we bring this to you for a one read. You receive all this information, including the bid tabs in your board packet. Mr. Van Goghtham, anything you'd like to add to this pizza gate?
I just want to agree or reiterate the yes. And here on Valley Schools, apparently pizza is one of the staples. You would think of it like a vegetable, as, based on the feedback that we have received. But again, working with our co-op plus partners, this is actually run through our co-op and we're hopeful that not only here on Valley Schools, but other districts will benefit from the bid that we put out there. So this will be for three years with two one-year renewal options. And I've been told from multiple sources, both in my home and here in the school district, that it's important we get this done. So I'm happy to present this to the board. And again, we had a fairly lengthy discussion in Finance and Operations and we're happy to put this forward to you guys for approval this evening.
All right, thank you very much. So I think before we start discussion, I would like a motion, please. Pizza motion.
Sure, I'll move the Board of Education approve the food service pizza bid. 2025-26 is presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Support?
I will support.
Ooh, lots of support for pizza. I'll take Ms. Grzamkowski's support. Comments? Discussion?
This is the same pizza that our students are used to?
Correct.
From the same company?
Mm-hmm.
And pricing compared to previous year?
Pricing is very similar to what it was. They did not really raise their prices. When we did compare that with other vendors, such as like the other pizza groups, I mean, it was substantially less, so we feel like we're getting a good deal. And it's important to remember that, you know, when we buy purchases, it's also, has to fall within the nutritional guidelines. So these are whole grain pizzas with, you know, reduced fat cheese. And so these are made to meet the requirements of our food service group, but also, you know, be somewhat appealing to the students, which based on the comments that you've heard from the last several years, it's not a problem from a taste standpoint. So yeah, we're very happy with the bid that came to us. And Little Caesar's is a name that's, you know, renowned in the area.
So because it's being presented to us, and school has already started, we haven't had pizza as part of our menu?
Not hot, fresh and ready pizza, Tom.
I won't go any further than that. How quickly will we have pizza on our menu so that we don't hear, we don't have pizza gate anymore?
If you're so kind as to approve the motion beside you tonight, I would think next week we will have pizza ready to go.
It'll be hot and ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
There's no product placements at the board meeting. Other comments? All right, let's take a vote about pizza. Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Grzamkowski?
Yes, please.
Mr. Demick?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
And Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Pizza's back. All right, pizza for all. Okay, moving down to C, data center bid, exhibit G.
Okay, so this item has Dr. Nemeth as well as Mr. Endicott as the presenters. So I will kick it to Dr. Nemeth, but before I do that, I just want to give Mr. Endicott a quick shout out and say happy birthday. Thank you for being here on your birthday this evening. A little birthday told me. Dr. Nemeth?
So I will just introduce Mr. Endicott and Mr. Twig to share the data pid package that I think went to two committees regarding some upgrades to the system and change.
We hate to follow pizza. That's not an envious position here. Scott Endicott, Director of Technology, hello everyone. When it comes to a project like this, first of all, some people say, well, what in the world's a data center? Data center is all of our equipment that sits in our server room here at Milford, that servers and storage that handles all of our applications and storage, file storage, Skyword for the entire district. So this is the equipment that's sitting over there. When it comes to a project of this size, we're very thoughtful and intentional about how we spend this money and when we do updates, when these come for refresh. So this is happening a little sooner than expected, giving some details that Mr. Twig will share. We have Paul Twig here with us. He's our data, or I'm sorry, our technology consultant when it comes to anything bond-related. So, and he'll go into the details of just why and what we're proposing to do. So Paul?
Scott mentioned, early after the 2019 bond pass, the data center equipment was installed. The plan was let it go five years, pay maybe one or two years out of general fund for support, and then refresh it. One of the software manufacturers last year dramatically, dramatically increased their support prices to where it would be well into six figures in order to maintain it. Plus, they would only give one year renewals at a time. So we decided that rather than spending that much, we would go ahead and we would, you know, spending that much just to keep old equipment running, we would go ahead and replace the equipment. The equipment runs about 75 servers, and as Scott mentioned, they range from the student information system down to print servers. We received proposals from five different companies, and we asked each to give us multiple configurations, because we wanted to balance the cost with general fund versus bond dollars versus potential uptime. Scott mentioned the main equipment is here over at Lakeland High School, is some redundant equipment. So we asked people to present, what would it look like? What would the cost be if we were to have a redundant data center over at Lakeland so that if anything happened at Milford, there would be no time for the district? We also asked, because you have equipment over at Lakeland that we've never had to fail over to that, we asked, what would it cost if we had all the equipment here and had a backup over at Lakeland in order to make sure that all the data was protected if something was to happen to the space here? Received from those five companies, 12 to 15 different proposals, ranging from about half a million to about one and a half million dollars. When we met with TLT, we hadn't come up with a recommendation yet, but shortly after that, for the FNO committee, we did. The proposal that is before you tonight is from a company in a technical services group, and it will have all of the core equipment at Milford High School. It'll have a backup over at Lakeland High School. And if you see in the lower right-hand corner, there's also an immutable backup. That means it, once it's written there, it can't be changed. That helps protect us from cyber attacks. It helps protect us from ransomware, because you could go back 45, 60 days, you know, before that situation happened and still be able to do restoration. What made this proposal unique is that that equipment had enough of the computing necessary to get up and running about 30 of the 75 servers. And we could use just any servers that are off the shelf in order to get the rest of that compute. When we talk about this, it's talking about a catastrophic event here at Milford High School. We're not talking about a bad power supply, a bad hard drive, a bad piece of equipment. We're talking about a fire or something of that magnitude. Since that is, you know, very unlikely, we felt like that balancing again those dollars, looking at this proposal that is just over half a million, seemed responsible for the community, responsible to the district, as opposed to spending, you know, a million dollars plus to have complete redundant equipment at both sites, just in the case of something like, again, a fire, a flood, one of those type of events. So I believe that in the board packet, it was included the three boxer with the company that's being recommended. One more comment on them. They are also the company that takes care of the data and the wireless network for the district. They're the company you would have been calling if you had a ransomware attack anywhere. They are the district's trusted partner. So I think that tied into, we liked the architecture of this, made it, you know, pretty easy for the committee to decide that this should be the solution recommended.
Thank you. Questions? Great presentation.
Thank you.
Helpful, I'm glad you put it out there for them to give you a number of responses, because sometimes we don't know what we don't know, and they should if they're coming to us with options. So I appreciate that. Tom?
Just a couple of clarifications. We talk about ransomware, we talk, just recently, we had a local school district be compromised. How does this all fit in? I know, Jeffrey, I know within our insurance, there's a lot of technology audits, cyber audits and things such as this. How does this fit in with protection and protection with our insurance companies? And what involvement do they have in this whole design?
That's a great question. In fact, this bid of all the companies we looked at and all the architectures we looked at, this company focused the most on cybersecurity needs. They have things, the HP equipment, it has built-in AI-driven processes that can detect earliest stages of data encryption, those sorts of things that if we're not initiating those, they can send us an alert and say, hey, things are being encrypted. Did you mean to do this? They also, HP specifically, and that's the brand of hardware that we're choosing here, they'll guarantee that an HP support engineer will be assigned to support our recovery within 30 minutes of those snapshots being taken. So there are some serious safeguards when it comes to this particular equipment that wasn't included in some of the other bids, and that had a hand in, you know, us going this direction. In addition to being a trusted partner, being the lowest bid, I mean, it just seemed like a slam dunk. But also from a cybersecurity standpoint, HP and Veeam, Veeam is the backup solution that they're proposing, and they have, they've collaborated on this software. It's actually, it's an API called Catalyst. And what that does is it basically makes the appliance become invisible on the network once it's been written, once data has been written to the backup. So you can encrypt something you can't find. So that means that our data isn't sitting there on our network drives, just sitting there in an active state. It actually turns it off and it can't be, it can't be seen on our network. So there are a lot of advantages to this particular, this particular solution.
Right, thank you.
Thanks. Two more questions. Amy, go ahead.
So when you came to TLT, we discussed the fact that the reason we're talking about this is because our current provider has really increased the price of that service contract. So we are talking about new hardware and now a new service contract. How long is the service contract and what do we expect, could this happen to us again?
That's a good question, too. And it's not the provider of the hardware support, and it's not the hardware provider that we purchased the hardware from. It's the company that creates the software that allows a virtual environment, so we can run 75 servers on actually like four servers. So we buy four hardware servers, we run 75-ish virtual servers on those. So what the company that raised their prices in a crazy way, that's the company that has, you know, and it's not just us, and it's not just the solution we picked. So I will say, though, that one of the priorities when we talked to, you know, all these different bidders, was that we wanted a solution that we may be able to push for that sixth and seventh year. And so the software component, that's, the pricing is the concern right now. That software component, we're buying that software at the beginning, so we're buying, we're not buying it at a yearly charge. We're buying the software, it's Microsoft Hyper-V, which is, that's the software that, and we're buying, the license is called, it's not a subscription, it's a perpetual license. So we're buying that now. We can keep using that as long as they support it, but there's not any recurring charges on that particular software. We were clear that we were not happy with the VMware solution that charges yearly, and the prices went way up. So this is a completely different software provider that we're going with now. So we don't expect that there will be subscription charges for the software that sixth and seventh year.
Thank you. Great question. Mr. Demick?
Amy pretty much covered what I was going for, so we're all good.
Great, so it was such a good question, it was going to get asked twice. What else? Other questions? No, this is great, thank you. And again, with this one, we have two weeks to review everything, get questions to Dr. Nemeth if you have them, and then we'll take a vote on this at our next meeting. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you.
All right, we still have an opportunity for public comment. We always do it twice in a meeting, and I have not received any forms, so we'll move on to good and welfare. Do we have good and welfare from anyone on the board? Ms. Grzamkowski?
So I'm sorry, Gabby, but I was at Lakeland a lot last week, a lot, a lot. And it was, honestly, it was great. We, I met with Dr. Sala and Ms. Bue, the principal at Lakeland, on Monday, and we took a walk through the building, got to see some very interesting AP psych projects, and we were in the ASD, we got to meet the new teacher. It was really great to see her this evening. And I happened to be at the LVC cross-country meet where Huron Valley decided to really represent. Not only did Huron Valley, the Lakeland Girls, varsity and JV win for the teams, but the Milford Boys won on the boys' side. So we had both Huron Valley Schools winning LVCs for cross-country. And it was really exciting to see them, you know, all these different families from Huron Valley be at Lakeland. I think it was the first time Lakeland has hosted an event like that, so it was really fun to see the success of our students. And then I was able to attend the choir concert in the evening with Dr. Nelson, and we had 140 students in the choir, and 70 of those students had never performed before. Our IA choir was bursting at the seams. We have now a third choir, bel canto. And I have to say, oh my word, these students are so talented. So whether it was on the cross-country course or on a riser at the CPA, it was exciting to be a part of the high school experience for our students. And I just want to say, well done, students. It was, it was great to see you excel.
Very nice. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Wiseman?
Also, I think our Lakeland Girls represented our community at the state golf tournament.
Yes, they did.
They, I think they ended up like sixth in Division One. And they made my, I looked at their scores and I don't think I would have made the team.
They did really well.
They did really well. Amazing. A couple of other things, good and welfare. I look forward to this weekend. Many of us on the school board will be spending our own personal time at our annual at our annual leadership conference that's hosted by Michigan Association of School Boards. It's really an opportunity for us to, because we're lifelong learners, an opportunity for us to, to learn from our colleagues and break bread with our colleagues. And I look forward to the presentation that, that Barb and, and Laura and Paul will be presenting on our behalf as it relates to safety and security. So I look forward to that. This week, we, a number of us also had an opportunity to attend the Oakland School Board Association meeting. And we always take some nuggets back. And I, I forwarded on to Paul, the presentation was done by our own Scott Morell. Scott has been part of our, our, our study sessions in the past and, and have brought us together as a team. But he presented guiding pub, public schools for increasing student achievement. And that's what we're all about, is student, student achievement. And that's what our focus is. And it talked about five roles of the school board. Set clear expectations, hold the systems accountable, create conditions for success, build the public will, and learn as a board superintendent team. And that was really the highlight. This presentation, for those that were not able to attend, I pass them on to Dr. Sala. Dr. Sala has that and maybe you can share that with everybody. I'd appreciate that. In addition to that, this week, I think the next board meeting is actually going to be in November. And it's after the biggest, probably the biggest school holiday of the year, and that's Halloween. And we have Halloween coming up. So in the spirit of Halloween, I happened this morning, as I was getting a couple of my grandchildren on the bus, saw a book that said Halloween jokes. So I was looking through that. And I was trying to find one that kind of related to schools, all right? Because that's what our business is, right? And I thought, you know, I'm not going to put our school board, my fellow colleagues on the spot. But I thought maybe I'd take one of the, the, the coat members on the spot. So I have kind of a, a joke, but it's kind of a riddle. And I'm going to start with the two assistant superintendents. And if they don't have the answer, I'm going to move it all the way down. So Barb, be ready, okay? Because you very, you're at the end and there's nobody, look to your left, there's nobody else there, so. So I'm going to start with Mr. Van Goghtham, all right? And you can pass it on. What is a witch's favorite subject in school? Do you have any idea?
No, I don't think I have it, Tom.
Well, I started with business. I didn't expect much from you, all right? But now the pressure's on because now I'm going to the assistant superintendent of TLT, and that's teaching, learning and technology. So I'm going to repeat that. What is a witch's favorite subject in school? Now, take a moment. Pressure's on because if you don't have the answer, Todd, you're next.
I think this is an easy one, Tom. This is spelling.
See, we hired the right person, didn't we? I mean, I, I love John, but I don't know if John Travinsky would have had that answer, all right? I don't know if John would have known that. But our new assistant superintendent knew that answer, so.
Thank you, Tom.
Todd, you're off the hook. But be ready next time, okay?
All right, thank you, Tom. Other good and welfare. It's clear that Tom is taping the Lions game because he does not have any desire to get, get out of here. Yes.
Since we're talking about the Lions, they're up seven, nothing.
I don't want to know. I'm taping it. I guess you don't call it taping.
All right. Okay, with that, we are moving on to, we do have a closed session, so sorry, school board. The rest of you really do get to go. Michigan Open Meetings Act provides that all meetings of a public, public body shall be open to the public and held in a place available to the general public. Open Meetings Act also provides, however, for those situations in which a public body may meet in a closed or executive session. The circumstances under which public body may go into closed session are specifically spelled out in the act, as is the procedure for going into a closed session. Today, our board plans to go into a closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, specifically a written legal memorandum. No formal action, voting shall take place in a closed session. The purpose of this and all closed sessions is to discuss, review, listen and consider. Any all action must and will take place in an open meeting. So I move that the board meet in closed session to privately discuss with the HVS attorney a memorandum of advice as permitted under section eight H of the Open Meetings Act, which provides that a public body may meet in a closed session to consider material exempt for discussion or disclosure by state and federal statute. Do I have support?
I support.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Please, a roll call vote. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Grisimskowski?
Yes.
Mr. Demick?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
I am a yes. A less enthusiastic. Motion passed. Thank you. So we will open and adjourn the meeting in a little bit. But for all intents and purposes, have a lovely evening. Yeah, we're good.